You okay, Kim? Thank you. Good evening, all. Your Town Council would like to welcome you to the regular Town Council of Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:35 PM this evening, and we would ask you all to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hayes, would you call the roll, please?
Chair O'Neil.
Here.
Vice Chair Tousignet.
Yep.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Counselor Blow.
Here.
Thank you. Acknowledgements, Ms. Reed and Counselor.
I do have some.
Ms. Reed.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Fred Dolben. Fred and Arlene were citizens of Old Orchard, residents of Old Orchard for many years. They were one of the first members on the Community Animal Watch, and they served on other committees as well. They were great supporters of our community, and we offer our condolences to their son and to all their friends in Old Orchard Beach. Secondly, I'd like to thank Tony Scovino, who is the Director of the Shuttle Bus, the Bitterfitzaco Old Orchard Beach Transit System, who is retiring. And both Kenny and I have been on the board, Counselor Blow and I have been on the board for a while together. He's done an excellent job. He came in at a very difficult time, as the Town Manager will know, and turned much of the shuttle bus operation around, and we are most appreciative of that. And finally, I'd like to thank Public Works for the great job they did with the ice on the road. I heard from a couple of elderly people who appreciated their efforts, and I think that's it.
Excellent. Well done. Thank you. Other acknowledgements, Counselor? To good and welfare this evening. Comments from members of the public? Comments from Counselor? Having none to the acceptance of minutes, except the special meeting minutes from Monday, January 18th, 2021, and the regular Town Council meeting minutes from Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. There's no further discussion, and none opposed. Motion carries five zero. This evening, we have a presentation for our fiscal year 2020 audit by RHR Smith &amp; Company. So we welcome, welcome you. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you all.
If you're comfortable, you can drop your mask, because we're six feet away. People don't even better hear you. Thank you for that, yeah.
Thank you all for being here. My name's Erica McKay. I'm here with RHR Smith &amp; Company. And this evening, we're going to be going over an overview of your fiscal year 20 financial statements, just looking at some of those highlights here. I'd first like to thank Diana and the Finance Department here. It's been an incredibly difficult year with everything that's been through. There's been grants and projects, a pandemic. So through all that, I really, really commend her. It's not only been a process on the town of Old Orchard Beach's side, but also in the financial world for us as well. There's been many changes with note disclosures to our financial statements, and also a whole new compliance supplement for federal coronavirus relief funds. So that actually didn't even come out until December. So it's been a challenging year, for sure, but Diana and her team have really, really worked well and made sure that everything moves smoothly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That being said, I want to start off here with the first slide. This is going to be an overview of your balance sheet for all major funds. And if you can see here, you're going to see three different columns, four different columns. The first, on the left-hand side, is going to be your general fund. This is going to be your operating fund. The side to the right is going to be your CIP, Public Works. The next column is going to be your other governmental funds, which is actually broken down further into the audit, which is comprised of your special revenues and capital project funds. And then your aggregate governmental funds is all the way on the right there. So if you were to take a look at your general fund assets, this is what you held at June 30th, 2020. You had about $17.4 million. Your liabilities, which is what was owed, any accrued liabilities or accounts payable, that came in at about $5.8 million. Your deferred outflows of taxes came in at $1.6 million, and that leaves you with an overall fund balance of a non-spendable general fund balance of $58,000, which is your prepaid and non-spendable balances. Your committed balance of $31,000, which is tied up for encumbrances. You have an assigned fund balance of about $1 million, which is going to be used to reduce your next year's tax commitment. And that leaves you with an overall net unassigned fund balance of just over $7.8 million, or sorry, just under $7.8 million. In your Public Works major fund, you'll notice that you had assets of about $2.7 million, liabilities of just about $3,000. $8.793 million. Yep. And your overall fund balance for your CIP Public Works Fund was about $2.73 million at year end. The aggregate other funds, your total fund balance, was $2.72 million. And again, that's comprised of your special revenues and capital projects, which is also broken down further in your audit financial statements. If we go here to the next slide, this is going to be a comparison of the past three years of your general fund assets, which is, again, your operating fund. The columns on the left, which is the green, that's going to be the fiscal year 20, which is the audit year that we just completed. The blue in the middle is your FY '19 balances, and the orange, which is all the way on the end, that's your FY '18 balances. So if we were to take a look at your cash balances, here at FY '20 year end, you had about $14.9 million, whereas in FY '19, $12.9, and in FY '18, you had about $11.47. Majority of the reason for the increase in your cash this year is due to an increase in bond funds and an increase in actually owing some of your other capital projects and special revenue funds and money as well. Your tax receivable balances, this year, as you can see, was slightly higher than other years at $2.4 million, whereas in FY '19, it was $1.8 million, and in FY '18, $1.5 million. That being said, with the 60-day collections subsequent to year end, we noticed this year in FY '21, you actually received a much higher portion of those receivables than you did in prior year. So that's not anything to be alarmed of, looking at those numbers. Your other and your, so your other receivables are going to be slightly higher this year at $229,000 compared to $43,000 and $15,000 in years prior, and that is actually due to your coronavirus relief funds. You're waiting for those to come in after year end. And then we see your inventory and prepaid balances stay pretty stagnant throughout the years, which is definitely very typical to see. You'll also note that your due-to-do forms, which is actually what the general fund cash is owing the other funds, such as your capital projects and special revenue funds, those stayed about pretty stagnant with the years prior as well. And also, to kind of go with the cash balance, because we also noted that there was an increase this year, we noted that the tax collection rate was actually 96% this year, which is incredibly well if we look at surrounding towns. We also, it's really great to see, because during this pandemic, we weren't quite sure what was going to happen cash-flow-wise. That being said, Diana's done a great job with her projections, and there has been no need to take out a tan or any line of credit. So it's definitely very healthy to see a cash balance like that, especially throughout a pandemic. So, congratulations on that. Looking here at your next slide, this is going to be a comparison, again, of the three years, but this is going to be your liabilities, what's owed at year end in the general fund. Looking at your accounts payable, you came in relatively fairly accurate with other years. You had about $257,000 outstanding, whereas in FY '19, you had $329, and in FY '18, $415,000. Your payroll accruals came in at $61,000 versus $22.1,000 and $184,000 in years prior. And this is really just a timing situation. You actually had a payroll that kind of capped over the, just a couple days at year end, so you really didn't owe as much as prior. Your other expenditures, such as your escrows, stayed pretty stagnant with the years prior. And your due-to-do from, which is actually what the general fund is owing the other funds, increased slightly about $1.2 million from prior year at $5.2 million. And that increase was largely due to the bond proceeds that are actually due to your other funds. Going here to the next slide, this is going to be a three-year comparison, starting with the left going to the right with your FY '20, FY '19, and FY '18 non-spendable fund balances. This is actually comprised of your inventory, your prepaid, and your assigned and committed fund balances, which is used for your subsequent year's budget. You'll note that current year, FY '20, is slightly higher than your other years at $1.1 million, where FY '19 was $581,000, and the year before that in FY '18, you had about $653,000. That increase was majority due to the $1 million that's going to be used to offset the FY '21 budget. Going here to the next slide, this is a comparison of your unassigned fund balances for the general fund. And you'll note that there's a steady increase, which we like to see. You have a very healthy fund balance at over 90 days of your operating budget, which is what we like to generally see. We generally tell our clients between 30 and 90 days, but where we're going through such hard and challenging times to really gauge that, it's great to see cash in the bank and not have to worry about an outflow of cash or anything like that. So, definitely great job with that. And this year, it's at $8.79 million, for those of you that can't see the board over there. And last year, we were at $7.6 million of unassigned fund balance, and in FY '18, it was $6.39 million. Going here to the next slide, this is going to be your operate, or sorry, your major fund revenue and expenses. So if we were to look at the four columns here, it's going to be a similar setup to the balance sheet we were just looking at, where you'll see your general fund on the left-hand side, your CIP Public Work Fund on the right. Next to that, your aggregate other governmental funds, which is going to be your capital projects and special revenues. And then in the end is your aggregate total governmental funds. Your total revenues for the fiscal year in your general fund came in at just over $33 million. Your total expenditures totaled about $30 million, with an aggregate of $1.3 million going out to your other funds. This resulted in a net change of $1.7 million to your overall fund balance, which actually increased your prior year total fund balance from $8.1 to $9.8 million this year. And that is comprised of both your unassigned fund balances and your assigned fund balances. If we look here at the next slide, this is going to be a breakdown of your total revenues in your general operating budget. And if you were to see the numbers, they're a little hard to see there, your total revenues are majorly coming from your taxes, which is about 90%, intergovernmental revenues, such as revenue sharing or homestead, comes in at 3.97%. And the third largest income is going to be your licenses, permits, and fees at about 3.8%. Going over to the next slide, we'll see a similar graph, and this is going to actually be a breakdown of your governmental fund expenditures. And as noted, the top three expenditures for the general fund is going to be your education costs, which is about 42.6%, and public safety, coming in at about 18%, and then your general governmental expenses, which is about 16%. Going over to the next slide here. This here is going to be a comparison schedule of your revenues and expenses for the past two years. In total, you'll notice that your total revenues increased from $31 million in FY '19 to $33 million in FY '20. Majority of these changes and increases in your revenues are going to be from your tax revenue, which is about $1.5 million increase. Your intergovernmental revenues increased about 1%. Your investment revenue increased about $100,000 this year. And your miscellaneous revenue had an increase of about a half of a percentage point as well. Your expenditures for your operating fund actually increased as well, not as much as your revenues increased, which is also why you have such a large increase in your fund balance this year. The total expenses in FY '19 came in at $28.8 million, and increased about $1.2 million to about $30 million in FY '20. The largest increase this year that we've noted is actually to your education, which is about a half a million dollars. The remaining increases are very stable, and there were no major changes from the prior year, which is what we like to see. If we go over to the next slide here, this is going to be a breakdown of your other governmental fund revenues and expenses. And as noted, this was what we had seen in the previous slide that was comprised of your other governmentals. And if you see, your special revenue column is on the left, your capital projects is on the right. And if you actually wanted to see a further breakdown of those, such as your TIF fund, your COVID relief fund, ballpark, your wastewater project, or your CIP admin, those are actually further broken down by individual fund as well in the financial statements. To kind of summarize, your special revenues at year end, the total revenues were about $1 million. The expenses were $900,000. The transfers out had an aggregate decrease of $379,000. And that left you with a decrease in your fund balance to your special revenues of about $242,000, resulting in just over $1 million balance in your special revenues. Your capital projects, which is, again, comprised of your wastewater, your CIP admin, and other funds, your total expense or revenues came at about $300. Your total expenditures were about $770,000. The transfers in and your bond proceeds capped at about $1.5 million, which nets to an increase to your overall fund balance from prior year of about $751,000, resulting in about $1.2 million fund balance. And I believe that is all for the slides. So this year, we really, we really had a challenging year, as we weren't allowed to be on-site. So this year, we actually did a lot of phone conferences and really looked at some different areas as we had in prior years. We also updated and checked in with some of the other areas that we had noted in prior years, where there were some procedures and policies that we wanted updating, specifically the recreation, code enforcement, rescue billing. We have worked very hard with Diana and the department heads in getting those policies and procedures updated, and we've seen great improvement this year with that. So, really happy to see that. One of our comments that we would say is, we really would like to get those updated policies and procedures formalized and approved by the council. So that's something that we would definitely note. One of the major things really is regarding those rescue billings and write-offs, really just making sure that everyone's on the same page. And really, other than that this year, it was mostly just policies and procedures that we noted really could use a big overhaul and review. Looking back at your fund balance policy, it's actually over 20 years old. While you definitely are within best practice of your fund balance policy, it's definitely something to think about, as well as even going in and looking at your capital projects, and really looking at your capital plan, and getting a plan that's consistent with where you want to be in five to 10 years to really kind of flow through your fund balance policy. So that's something that we definitely think that could really use some overview this, the coming year. And I think Diana, we've actually gone over a few of those policies, and she's got a couple samples that she's been working on updating. So I'm sure that those will be coming to you soon. One of the other areas that we noticed some, some help definitely could be in use was to your parking ticket revenue. It's definitely, after reviewing the process and procedures for that, it seems definitely like it's not efficient and effective, not only internally for the staff themselves, but I feel that you also could be increasing your revenue as well, if some of those policies and procedures were increased. So definitely something to think about over the next several years. And other than that, the town of Old Orchard Beach is doing great. So, thank you all.
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Counselor.
You'll have to bear with me, because we've got kind of ahead here. You had stated that the schools were, the difference in the numbers was a half a million dollars in the schools.
Correct.
Is that an over-budget in the schools?
No. So that's just the...
Explain that a little bit to me.
Yes. So each year, the school, they will set the budget, and then that is actually part of the town's commitment as well. And so over the two fiscal years, the increase in their budget actually increased $500,000. It was still on budget. It wasn't over-budget.
We don't control that budget. That's why I ask.
Right.
We don't, we don't see that information, other than what you've just reported. Thank you.
Of course.
Other questions, comments, Counselor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, very well done. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you all.
I'd like to thank our Finance Director, Diana, for the excellent job she does to all the departments.
Definitely. Thank you.
To public hearings, business licenses and approval. Christopher Meyer, 207-27, 14 Forest Avenue, One Year Round Rental. Jody and David Connolly, 301-31-306-189, East Green Avenue, number 306, One Year Round Rental. Open the public hearing at 6:57. Comments from members of the public? Comments from Counselor?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion has been made in second. There's no further discussion, and none opposed. We'll close the hearing at 6:57. Motion carries five zero. To our Town Manager's report this evening, Mr. Mead.
Thank you, Chair O'Neil. Well, I know the weather wouldn't make us seem that we're going in this direction, but ready or not, we're already in the process of filling our summer positions in the various departments. So applications are now being accepted online or by sending us your information for reserve officers, recreation staff, lifeguards, Public Works seasonal employees, wastewater, we need a seasonal employee, and staff for our Memorial Park maintenance. So, just go to the town's website and click on employment, and you'll be hearing from us. Also, the budget preparation this time of year, a lot of our time, Department Heads, myself, and Finance Directors, in preparation of the municipal budget, which is coming up. And I'll be presenting the FY '21 budget to Counsel four weeks from tonight at the March 16th meeting. I received a letter a couple of weeks ago from FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, was informing the town that FEMA has accepted the alternate methodology that was put forward by Ransom Engineering on behalf of the town for the area near the marsh on East Grand Avenue. This is related to the flood plane, flood elevation maps. So FEMA will modify the proposed flood maps for those, for five specific map panels only. Those are all in the marsh area on West Grand Avenue. This, this change does not affect the proposed flood elevations for the remainder of the town, including downtown and Ocean Park. FEMA does not expect that the new flood elevations, the new maps for these five map panels will be released until later this year, after which, when they are released, there will be a 90-day appeal period for the affected maps only, not for the rest of town. It's likely that the revised flood elevations for all locations, or the new maps for all locations, will not be in effect until sometime in the first half of 2022. And as we get information from FEMA as to the timing and progress, we will make residents aware of that. Working with MDOT on the possibility of reconfiguring the Smith Wheel Road intersection as a four-way signalized intersection. And this has come about because the Old Orchard Beach campground is now planning to add 150 RV and park model campsites, which is about a 50% increase from what they currently have. Because this would add yet more left-turn traffic in this vicinity, MDOT is supportive now of conducting an analysis of this location for traffic signals. So it's all very preliminary still at this point, but it's a good step, I think, forward to have MDOT supportive of the study. We should know within a couple of two, three weeks whether or not the study will go forward, and it would take several months to complete it. And it would be complemented, the study would be complemented by the traffic analysis that's already underway at the five-way intersection at halfway. So they're going to work together as this goes forward. So I'll certainly keep the Counsel informed as this moves ahead. So I wanted to just acknowledge and compliment the Recreation Department on really doing a great job for bringing a skating rink, both at the pond behind the ball field, and also they've got a small starter rink near the building down at the ball field that can be used by smaller children. So pond skating even has night lighting, which is available till nine o'clock at night. And I went down there this weekend to observe, and I can say that on Saturday, it, there was, the starter pond, rink was being used by a number of the small children and their parents. It was really, really great to see. And the larger pond skating was going forward, and there was hockey going on and just general skating as well. And then I had a chance Saturday, Sunday night, to go down myself, when nobody was there, so they wouldn't see me falling, and I went skating on the pond to try it out. Hadn't done that in several years, but it was great. And so, a lot of credit due to our staff down there, Jason, Nikki Duplessis, Tyler Stewart, Jim Duran, all of the staff have worked their tails off to make this happen. So, things will likely get snowed in later this week from the forecast, but I would urge people to go to the OOB Recreation Facebook page, and you can get up-to-date information on that day as to whether skating is available for that day or not. So, town staff is working really hard on diversifying the methods by which we communicate information regarding town programs and community matters to our residents and visitors. We're doing this through enhanced use of social media, Facebook, and Instagram, YouTube channel, as well as using email, Public Cable Channel 3, and online streaming. In addition, we're, and I mentioned this the last meeting, I think, we're expanding the use of both our fixed message boards here at Town Hall and at the fire station, as well as our four mobile message boards around town to provide up-to-date information to people about things that we think are important for them to know. So, for more information about how to access information from the town, you can go to our website, the homepage, and click on Communications. So, the last thing I wanted to say is, one of the, not the two things, one is the topics that we've been promoting on our message boards is the state's vaccination consult line. And I just want to make note to people that the consult line is not a way to schedule an appointment to get your vaccination. So, I don't want you to see that and make the call thinking you're going to be able to schedule an appointment. call thinking you're going to be able to get a, schedule an appointment. What it's intended for is to connect you with the CDC, Center for Disease Control's staff to get a person alive who can answer your questions about the state's COVID vaccination program, including, you know, where are the vaccinations available, what age groups or what categories of people are currently being allowed to have vaccinations, and what is the timeframe looking forward for expanding that. So it's a general kind of information line or consult line for you to take advantage of. And the number for that, if people want to know, is, is 1-866-962-6062. And then the last thing, just a reminder that there will be, the council will have a workshop tomorrow night via Zoom about the proposed marijuana adult recreational retail shops, as well as potential businesses in other types of marijuana categories such as cultivation and testing. So that will take place tomorrow night at 6:30. And you can get, figuring out how to get access to that, just again, go to our website and, and look for the council meetings and click on it and we'll give you the information about how to participate in that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Mr. Mead. Well done, as always.
Could I just ask Larry if you've had any input from your dealings with other towns like Old Orchard about summer activity or tourist coming, anything like that?
This coming year, for the, for the coming season, do you mean?
Yeah. I just, I've been asked by a couple of folks and-
No, I really, I can't say that I have. I think we're all, the resort communities are kind of all on the same page on this, which is, we think it's going to be a better summer than it was last year. Even with the continuing concerns about COVID, more people will have been vaccinated by the time we get to the summer season. That will create a lot more confidence in people to get out and get about. And I think that those of us who've been talking about this in the resort towns believe that it's going to translate into a much more robust summer season for us. So knock on wood, that's, that's what we'll see. People will still need to be taking precautions, sensible precautions, mostly about wearing masks when you're indoors in particular. And I think, but if people do that, then I think it's really going to end up being a, a lot happier summer than we had last year. We can certainly hope for that.
On your new business this evening, item number 7360, discussion with action. To award the bid to Pickard Enterprises for rock crushing in the amount of $23,749 from account number 5000250506, CIP, road maintenance and improvements for the balance of $54,037.21. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Through the chair.
Mr. Mead.
Yes. So the purpose of this proposal is that, as counsel knows, when, when we're doing road projects, we stockpile in the pit a great deal of bituminous material and sometimes concrete material. It's not usable the way we bring it in there. It just, just keeps piling up, so to speak. So we have a very large pile of material that we're not able to use in its current state. So every few years, we seek to get a company to come in with their equipment and do the crushing of, of this material so that it becomes usable material for, for us and potentially for others. So what we'd do with this is, as we get road projects going forward that are going to require reclaim material, we can provide that material to companies that are coming in to do the work for us. We then save the cost of paying them for that material. We can also use it ourselves when we have projects that we're engaged in, in terms of putting reclaim down. And then finally, we can sell, we wouldn't need to use all of this material, but we can sell a portion of the material that we don't need to use to other private entities so that they can use it. And the expectation is that we would recover between savings that we get by providing the material to companies that are contracting with us, by not having to pay them for the material, and the revenue that we collect by selling the material, more than recover the cost of this work. So that's, that's why we bring this in front of you today.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mead. Are there comments from counsel? So I guess, I've always struggled with this and got a bit with this because it's, it's mostly contractors that are, are stockpiling that pile. And contractors are dumping it for free. So whether we offset our costs for our materials, it's still taxpayers' money that's being spent to crush that. And some of the bids, and I'm using round numbers, but $39,000, $52,000, $44,000, luckily we get a bid for $28,000. It's still taxpayer money. I don't understand why, I mean, we're in tough times all around. I don't understand why we can't start charging contractors just to dump and offset our costs that way as well, and then sell it back to them. I mean, if, if we were in fact selling them back, and I'd like to see the revenues from the sales that we've had in the past to, it may calm my nerves a little bit on this, but it would be nice to know that information because it's been a thorn in my side. We need to generate revenue. And to me, I see that pile grow every time I'm up there, and I'm up there a lot. You know, and it just frustrates me that I know it's, it's being dumped for free by ex, by contractors who are doing work in the town, who are charging people to dump it. That's where I struggle. Our, our citizens are still being charged and then we're not charging the contractor. They're making money on us and our citizens. And it hurts me that we're not making money on them. That's all. I thank you for that.
Through the chair. From my experience, most of the time that this stuff that's dumped up there would be dumped someplace else for free, that it generally is not charged to be dumped because the cost of crushing it is far less than the cost of buying it as a raw material out of a pit. So I'm not saying we can't try charging for it, Sean, because that would help bring some revenue in. But if we do and they take that and they haul it to, say, the pit out on Route 5, where he'll take it in for nothing, then crush it and then sell it, we're actually going to end up having to buy the product for our own use. We'll be charged by the contractors that are doing the work in town that will need that product far more than the $23,000 we're paying. How many yards are up there, do you know?
500.
500 yards? So what's that work out to a yard, Diana? $23,000 to crush 500 yards?
$5.
I can't hear.
A little under $5.
A yard. So to buy gravel is how much a yard?
To buy a yard.
18 bucks a yard?
Yeah, 18 to 25 if it's really good.
Right. So we're saving $17 to $20 a yard on, from buying it raw out of a pit. It's reclaimed. The use isn't always there for everything we need it for, because sometimes you have to have specific sized gravel, the bituminous or whatever it is, for a project. But in most cases, this product can be used for the majority of what needs to be done, add the savings up to $17 to $20 per yard. I do understand what you're saying, Sean, but I'm, I'm also wanting to reiterate, we take it for nothing because most places will take it for nothing because they'll recrush it and then sell it. And then they'll sell it for the, for, if it's recrushed or reclaimed, depends on what it is, whether it's asphalt or if it's concrete or a mixture of both. Anyways, from, you know, 12 to 15 to $18 a yard just to, to resell it after it's been done. So that's why I'm in favor of it, so.
Not an expert in this regard, but I was surprised at the discrepancy in the cost between the vendors.
Well, that also, so in fairness to those vendors, it depends on how busy they are. I think Joe will attest to that. If somebody's really busy and they're putting a price in, if they put in a price of $40,000 and they get it, they're making huge money. If they don't get it, they don't care because it's so busy. Generally, that's where it comes from. But taking the lowest price on crushing is something that you can easily do because the products are same no matter who crushes it. Thank you.
Thank you as well. And I'm not going to debate that. I'm just, I brought my point up. It's just, it's expensive to taxpayers. I don't feel that the taxpayers need to, need to be paying, whether it's offset or not. And I know most places won't take it for free because it costs me in other communities to dump just grass. So I highly doubt that several places will take it for free.
No, without arguing, there's a difference between grass and gravel because grass isn't reused.
If I could dump five yards of cement for free, I, I find that hard to believe. But that's, my point is made. Thank you for that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I'll ask the expert here, Kenny.
Not an expert, and I just dealt with it.
In some of those bids, aggregate was going to be added. And I didn't read all of them to see if that was the case in all of them. I didn't see that in this bid. It's, so is it 500 yards or is that going to grow to something else? And my question is, is, is a weak cognizance of what's being added to it?
No, they, they went down and looked at the pile. They didn't exactly know what how many yards it is.
Yeah.
And they gave us a price in the pile.
Well, they'll take the dimensions of the pile. You can measure the width and the height.
No, no. One of the companies was going to add material to it as they crushed it, if I read it correctly. And that was one of the more expensive companies. That was $53,000 or something like that. And it, I don't have it in front of me, that part of the bids aren't in the commentary that I have, and I'm not complaining about it.
They were going to add stuff to it and then haul some off? So they want, they were going to crush some of their stuff with it, mix it, then haul some off?
They also wanted to-
Joe, 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 Joe.
I'm just wondering if we're ending up with 800 yards at the end of this or?
No, no. Pickard's coming in and crushing it as it is.
And he's not hauling anything off?
Not hauling anything off.
Okay.
One of the bidders wanted to haul off our leaf compost pile, which, no, we're not doing that. We make good loom out of that, so.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Counsel's motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion, thank you for hearing me out. Motion carries 5-0. Item number 7361, discussion with action. To convey foreclosed property identified as 18 St. John Street, parcel number is 00206, 00024, 00029, to owners of record Jennifer Violet, for the total amount with payoff as of 2/16/2021 of $35,330.69 in outstanding taxes and accumulated interest due on the effective date of convenience, including FY 2010 through FY 2021 taxes, plus any legal costs incurred by the town of Old Orchard Beach.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion?
Through the chair.
Counsel Kevin.
Is that back taxes for 11 years?
It's correct.
How did it go that far?
Well, counsel, if you would, if you, counsel's made a decision that with single-family residences, owner occupied, that allow the person to live there and we don't throw them out. And then when they leave, property is sold and we get proceeds for what is owed to us, including interest. So in this case, their interest is, the actual principal of the tax amount owed was $27,000. The interest on, because they hadn't paid it, was $8,200, which brings to the total of $35,000. It would need to, the council would really need to make a decision that with respect to single-family residences, we would aggressively go after them to try to recoup that cost.
Thank you. This seems like a long, long way to go. I, I just, you're, and I thank you for the reminder of what counsel's actions were, Mr. Mead, and how we get to this point. But I believe, and I am, I could speculate in this, in any, in any scenario, most cases is an elderly individual or individuals living in the home who couldn't afford their taxes. And in this case, it may be a family member who's buying the property back.
Correct.
So that's, that's how we get to that point, rather than throwing two elderly folks out on the street.
Correct.
And I think it's pertinent and the right thing for counsel to agree to that we just continue for single-family homes to operate in this fashion. But I think that's-
And through the chair, Larry, what's the tax, what's the interest rate?
It's usually seven or eight percent.
Which is substantially higher than we're going to get on anything. I mean, I, I want to publicly state, I have a hard time at the thought of throwing anybody out of their home because they can't afford the taxes. And I don't, would never want that to become a whirlwind, let's not pay our taxes when I get thrown out. But as Sean said, when you, generally it's elderly couple that has a hard time affording the taxes. And we don't lose in the end either way, because the, the interest rate on the taxes is far higher than we could ever get doing anything else with the money. And the amount, or the amount of properties that are out there that would fall under this scenario is not a great number.
Correct. So I'll just make a final, so part of that policy was, we have an abatement program, which should have kicked in a long, long time ago on somebody that's 11 years in the rear. Okay? If they can't pay their taxes, that's, that's just what the abatement program is about. And they, in, in my personal opinion, you should not be able to get out 11 years. We have a way to help those people if they truly need help and they can't pay their taxes.
But if we're getting it after 11 years, I'd rather do that because the residents get all their money rather than abating it. So I mean, Larry may want to speak a little to that if he's, if he so chooses. But again, I'd, my object, my, my thought is I don't want to throw anybody out of their home.
I don't think that's what-
And I'm not-
I just assume not abate it, but collect it 11 years later than abate it three years into it or five years into it. That's all.
And we wouldn't be throwing anybody out of their home, I don't believe.
Or, or abate it, is what I'm getting at.
Well.
It has been, I mean, constitutional, you're absolutely right. We, there used to be an abatement process, but it's been quite some time since we've used that process.
Yes. It's, it's there for that purpose. That's the purpose of it, so that people aren't allowed to not pay their taxes. Okay? And I don't want to get rude about it, but people love to pay their taxes.
When you abate it, you're not paying your taxes, right?
That's, that's the world we live in. I'm sorry about that.
When you abate it, you're not paying the taxes, Mike.
You are correct.
Okay. So, okay. So without turning into an argument, and I apologize through the chair, because I don't want to turn it into a major argument, I'd rather wait 11 years, collect the taxes in, in the interest, rather than having to abate it. So I mean, publicly, that's where I stand. Yeah, that's right.
When you go 100, when you go 100, Mike?
Next one.
Sorry.
If there's no further discussion?
Sorry, I, yeah.
And none opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
Through the chair, just, just so you, you know, and the residents know, what we, what we try to do each year when we get the list of properties that may go into foreclosure is we look at that list, we identify the properties that are single-family residence, residences, and then we try like heck to work with them so that they avoid the foreclosure at all means possible. And we were successful, this, for example, this year, we did the same thing. A lot of phone calls, a lot of contacts, and we were able to work with it. I think we ended up one or two maybe properties that, that were single-family residences that went in foreclosure and a lot more that didn't. So we're proactively trying to help or work with people ahead of time so we don't get into those as much as possible.
Excellent. Thank you for adding that, Mr. Mead. Item number 7362, discussion with action. To authorize the town to enter into a mutual aid assistance agreement with the main water/wastewater agency response network, known as M-E-W-A-R-N, MEWARN, for the purpose of coordinating response activities and sharing resources during emergencies. Mr. Mead or Chris, would you like to, I know we're doing this basically in the event a COVID situation should arise and we're short-staffed, is that-
Definitely what motivated us was the potential for having, if we had a COVID outbreak at the plant, at the facility, and we have seven employees, and if we lost all seven or five or four, we would be in a position that we would really be scrambling to find some help. So talking to Chris about that, he identified that this entity already existed. And so we, we are suggesting that we become members of this mutual aid agreement. It's similar to what you recently approved for public safety personnel. And it's something that we, we in turn, if we're asked to lend an employee or to another community, you don't have to do that if you aren't able to at that time. So you, it gives you flexibility, but it also provides a structure, get assistance when you need it, and to have mutual insurance coverage that is, that is documented for when you have that help.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, counsel, comments?
Uh-
More motion?
And how does this work union-wise? Not that I want to get into a pickle about all this.
How's it work? What now?
Union-wise.
Oh, it's, it's, union is all, union is on board. We're, we're good. We're, we're good.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion. And none opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number 7363, discussion with action. To set the date of March 2nd, 2021, for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the town of Olochich Beach Code Of Orders, Chapter 74, Article 4, Division 3, Section 74153, and Division 4, Section 74207, Subsection B, Chapter 74, Article 6, Section 74313. This amendment proposes changes to subdivision addressing and street sign standards.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has been made in second. There's no further discussion. And none opposed. Motion carries five zero. Item number 7364, discussion with action. To set the date of March 2nd, 2021, for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the town of Olochich Beach Code Of Orders, Chapter 50, Article 3, Division 2, Section 50111, and Section 50113, Chapter 50, Article 3, Division 3, Section 50171, and Section 50172, Chapter 78, Article 8, Division 4, Section 781467, Section 781468, and Section 781492, and Section 781495. These amendments propose changes to ordinance standards related to driveways. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made in second.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, I don't have the commentary necessary to maybe, have you got the strikeout right there? And my, my question was, Larry. I wish I could remember what it's, what it's, I'm going to read this. How does it do with the measuring of the driveway? And they're going to allow it to come to pavement of the road, I think. And my question was, what about the sidewalk? Does that become part of the driveway? The way I read it. See if I can find it.
Certainly. If there's a sidewalk, then, assuming, well, it depends on whether it's a public accepted street or not, I guess, but the sidewalk, if it's a public street, is within the town's right-of-way, and the individual has essentially permission from the town to cross the sidewalk to access their private property. And I would assume, although I don't know...
Does the sidewalk become part of their square footage for their driveway? Are they using that? My question was, are they being allowed to use?
Yes, they are.
The way I read it, it looks like they're being allowed to use the sidewalk as part of the 24 feet of depth for the driveway.
24 feet is width.
Width, okay. Well, there was a depth number there too, maybe, wasn't there?
Yep.
It was just the width that was talked about?
Changing the width.
Okay.
Yes.
So in essence, does the sidewalk become private property?
No.
In any way, is what I'm, that's what I'm getting to?
No, it does not.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, comments or questions? And motion will carry five zero. Item number 7365, discussion with action. To authorize the town manager to enter into a municipal partnership initiative, MPI, agreement with Maine Department of Transportation, MDOT, MDOT, and Poland Area Comprehensive Transportation System, also known as PACS, P-A-C-T-S, for road and sidewalk improvements to West Green Avenue between Union Avenue and Pavia Avenue, Pavia Avenue. Total project cost estimated at $200,000, with the town contributing $100,000 from funds to be appropriated in FY 22.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Motion has been made in second. No further discussion. And none opposed. Motion carries five zero. Item number 7366, discussion with action. To approve the liquor license renewal from Benjamin di Cristoforo Row, the local LLC doing business as the local eatery and tap, 309153 Washington Avenue, MSV in a Class A Restaurant Lounge. State liquor licensing changed the license from MSV in a cla, in a restaurant to MSV in a Class A Restaurant slash Lounge in their 2019 license. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion. And none opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number 7367, discussion with action. To accept a COVID-19 response grant in the amount of $5,000 deposited into 5, excuse me, 2514040561 COVID-19 response grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life to be used exclusively for public purpose of planning and operationalizing, that's a good one, operationalizing, safe and secure election administration. Try to get me on that one, huh?
They tried to trick you up in what they were trying to do.
Thank you, Louise. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion. And none opposed. Motion carries five zero. Item number 7368, discussion with action. To accept federal CARES Act grant funds through the Maine Secretary of State's office in the amount of $2,717, deposited into 2010250560. Keep MEA, Maine Healthy, COVID Grant Expense for the exclusive purpose of reimbursing municipalities for the purpose of an election drop box.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion, and none opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number 7369, discussion with action. To approve the special event permit application for the town of Olochich Beach to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade to honor our country's veterans. The parade will begin or be on May 31st, Monday, 2021, from 1:00 p.m. to approximately 3:00 p.m. With an anticipated parade start at the ballpark, traveling down Saco Avenue to Olochich Street, followed by First Street with an end in Memorial Park. Organizers will be expected to meet any health guidelines in effect at the time of the event as it relates to COVID-19.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has been made in second. There's no further discussion. And none opposed. That motion carries five zero. Item number 7370, discussion with action. Approve the quote from Carbon Activated Corporation to provide replacement odor control media in the amount of $5,835 from account number 2016150501 with a balance of $19,166.98.
So moved. Second for discussion.
Go ahead, counsel law.
Larry or Chris, I'm assuming it's that, between the two, is this for, I remember we discussed something that, about some type of a media for use being for odor control on something we were getting rid of. Is this for that? Or is it for something that was pre-existing?
No, this is, this is for the odor control system that was installed a year and a half ago.
So we're replacing it now?
Yes.
So is this going to happen about every year and a half, you think? Is that what, is that what we're on track for?
I, I would think. I don't know what the upgrade will bring. That could change. But the object is to get the carbon in there and ready for the summer, so.
So the stuff that's in there now expires?
It has. Yeah, it does, yep.
And then how do we know that it's expired?
Smell. Well, it, would you end up with like a crystallized?
Smell.
Well, that too. If it stops working...
And I'm not saying it doesn't need to be replaced. I'm just trying to, from my own understanding. So, I mean, it could go a little over a year, it could go a year and a half. It all depends on what's happening. Depends on what's happening at the treatment facility then, and the upgrades that we do.
Well, it depends on the H2S level in the tank.
Right.
And once it stops being effective, it's essentially no good, so.
But is this something that we're going to be able to plan through the budget going forward, knowing that it's going to be every year, a year and a half, or whatever? It's have some type of timeframe, or?
I have it in the budget for every year at this point.
So we technically would be ahead of the game? If it's gone a year and a half?
Yeah, if you replace, if you replace it now, my recommendation would be to budget it in the FY 22 budget so that potentially could buy it.
If we needed to, but if we won't replace it unless we need, so if it can go a year and a half, it'll go a year and a half. It'll just be able to be budgeted that would carry forward, or however it may work. Okay, perfect. Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Chris, can I ask you a question? Is this something that gets removed? Or is this just wear out, evaporates, or whatever?
No, it doesn't disappear. It needs to be back, trucked out. I spoke with the Public Works Director, and that's something we can do.
Yeah.
And we would just, it comes in a huge sack, and it's just basically dumped in the new stuff, so.
And where does the waste, where does the waste material go?
Eco, right now I have it scheduled to go to EcoMaine.
And what would that cost? Do you know what that, I mean, is that, is it a lot of money?
Somewhere in 50 bucks a ton. It's not expensive to get. There is, it's not a big unit, so.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to ask. How, how much is this? How much is, how much do we, I mean, is it by the yard? Do we have tons we have to get? I mean, curious how much
I'm trying to remember.
The volume is.
Was that about three yards? Yeah, it's not, it's a very small...
Pretty expensive stuff then, because we put it in ourselves?
We put it in ourselves, yeah.
Wow. It's not cheap.
It's cheaper than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, I had two quotes. The original vendor quoted, I think it was the 8,000 something, and I looked for alternative sources, and that was one of them, so.
And then when it's going to Eco, is it going right into the burn area where the trash is going, do you know? Are they landfilling it?
That's up to them.
Yeah, I just care. Okay.
I put it with the cement.
What's that?
Put it with the cement.
Can we mix that with the cement Sean knows to me?
You guys are killing me.
That's a good one.
That's exactly why I asked.
Thanks, Mike. Got to light it up somehow, folks. Okay. If there's no further discussion. Motion has been made in second. And none opposed. Motion will carry five zero. Item number 7371, discussion with action. Replace 17 light fixtures with LED bulbs on Eastern and West Green Avenue, and 36 light pole fixtures with LED bulbs on Olochich Street in the amount of $10,258.11 from account number 5000250507, CIP Public Works Sidewalk Capital Expense Account with a balance of $303,689.7.
So moved. Second for discussion.
Go ahead, counsel law.
So Larry, are we trying to see if Energy Maine, or whatever they call that, is going to reimburse us for any of that? Including the labor, the lights, because I know they do do it.
Yeah, we're going to try and see if we can get that, yep. Yes, we're going to try and see.
We don't know if there's funds available right now before we do it, though, do we?
We don't, no.
Can I make just a quick suggestion, is that we check before we have the work done? Because they may say we have no funds available until June, and then they won't reimburse it now, and we won't get it because it's being done now. But if it's in June, when we do it, then the funds will be available and they'll do it. Sometimes coordinating with them on that will save us some money, so.
It's a good thought, yeah. I'm excited about getting this done because it's one of those, I don't know if you've noticed it, but going downtown, you've got two different looks, and it'd really be great to have one...
Like a dull white and a bright white?
Exactly. And then Public Works is also replacing the bulbs, not the bulbs, excuse me, the globes that go over the bulb. So some of those are very much worn now and yellowed, and so we'll have a uniform look going downtown.
So it says pole fixtures. Is that just the globe or the whole pole?
This is just replacing the bulbs, and then we'd be replacing just the globe itself. We have, we have some, enough of those in stock, right, Joe?
We have we have 36 of those globes in storage at Salt Sand. They're clear. We took them out the other day, looked at them, and they're still good. They're leftover from the project, and we're just going to swap out the other ones with the clear ones.
So we, any poles that are missing, are we putting them back?
Yep.
We've had them repaired.
Is that, is that some, I remember seeing something that you had wrote maybe in, in a note you had made to us about that? Or maybe I just...
It's, we're actually doing it through the Public Works operating budget. We're repairing some of them with the welder, and then we had some additional poles that hadn't been used yet that we're using.
So they're going to match?
At the same pole, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely a priority for us to have a pole in every place by the time the summer's there.
Right, because I remember we had left some that we had problems with last year, and we ended up having to put a orange cone over it, and I mean, it just was not...
Okay, perfect.
Through the chair.
And we're also replacing the bollards at the corner. The ones that need, the ones that need replacing, we're going to replace.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Larry, since we're talking about that, anything we're going to do with the brickwork on the sidewalks? A lot of places it was up and...
Where, we go in every spring, and the places where it's really heaving, these guys go in and they do bring it down, and then by the end of the summer again, or the fall, it starts to heave again. We're not replacing the whole thing, but we'll do the locations.
No, there are some places that were pretty bad.
Yeah, there are. I agree. Yep, we did a couple of them last spring. We replay, we repaired a couple of them last spring. Get at the ones down there again this year.
All right, thanks. If there's no further discussion. And none opposed. Motion will carry five zero. Item number 7372, discussion with action. To appoint Irish Griffith and Jim Butler as deputy code enforcement officers, term to expire 7/1/21.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion. And none opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number 7373, discussion with action. To approve the line item transfers for the police department for the following. In the amount of $20,000 from account number 2013150104, seasonal reserve expense account with a balance of $161,357.50, and in the amount of $7,500 from account number 2013150109, seasonal overtime expense with a balance of $12,897.50. And in the amount of $3,000 from account number 2013150127, educational incentive expense with a balance of $3,000 to account number 5200250865, public safety CIP police security camera slash equipment expense account with a balance of $4,786.36.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion. And none opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number 7374, discussion with action. To approve the purchase of new, two new network video recorders to upgrade the police department CCTV camera system from Setronics Corp. in the amount of $33,982 from account number 5200250865, public safety CIP police security camera slash equipment expense account.
So moved.
I'll second that. And if I could just...
Thank you, counsel. Go ahead, constitutional.
The item before this is tied into this, I believe, right? I had, I had somebody call me and question me about why they were transferring money, so maybe just a brief explanation from the chief or from you publicly as to why this is happening, okay? I already know why, but...
Okay.
Chief, good evening.
Thank you. The reason for this request is because we currently have our exterior cameras around the town, as well as our in-house cameras in the, in the police facility, tied into a server that is no longer able to handle the number of cameras that we have in total. So for the last year or so, year and a half, we've consistently had issues with the system. And the recommendation was made by the current company, Exactitude, that services those, that the problem, the bulk of the problem is the server is no longer able to support the number of cameras we have, and it's old. It doesn't have enough power to support what we have. So their recommendation was to get a new server that's adequate, that should last us and is designed so that should we add any other cameras, which we do have to do because of a consent agreement we have with the business that we put another camera in. For that to, to work, we're going to have to get the system upgraded. So that's the reason for the request, and the transfers, as you mentioned, are part of that whole process. We went through our budget, and rather than try to budget for it in the upcoming fiscal year, we thought we would try to see if we had enough funding in some of our balances of this year's accounts, and we do. We feel comfortable with moving forward. We're trying to purchase it this year instead of waiting till next year.
So it was necessary to do it now?
Well, it was necessary.
No wait till the new budget?
It's been necessary for a while, we've, we've got some cameras that still aren't working, they've been out since Christmas, so it's something that needs to be done at some point.
Don't say that too loud. Let's not say that too loud.
Well, I'm not saying which ones.
No, you said the cameras haven't been working, so. I was just saying, let's not say that too loud.
Because he's not.
Thank you for that explanation. It kind of gets me off the hook a little, so.
Thank you, chief. If there's no further discussion, and not opposed, motion carries five zero. And lastly, item number seven, three, seven, five, discussion with action, to award the bid to Jordan Equipment for the 2021 Bobcat T770 Skid Steer Loader with Trailer, Multi-Purpose Bucket, Power rake, and Greater Attachments, in the amount of $87,780.40, less the trade-in of the 2012 Bobkid S650 Skid Steer Loader and Bucket, in the amount of $15,000, for a net price of $72,780.40. To be financed through a lease purchase agreement through the Andrews Cargan Bank at 1.68%, with five annual installments in the amount of $15,045.10, from account number 2019750330, Equipment Lease Debt Service Expense Account with a balance of $32,029.29.
So moved. Second, I, through the chair?
Council blow.
Joe? Now, if I remember right, the reason we're trading it is because the other one got pretty rusty and needed a lot of repairs.
Very rusty.
I just, I'm all for this, I just, because I brought it up, I just wanted to confirm that we're spraying that oil system that we purchased, and so that it helps protect us, so, you know, not every seven, eight, nine years we're having to trade out equipment that's actually too rusty.
We are, we are spraying out of equipment, and we will spray it again in the spring, but the best thing about that stuff is when we go to wash the trucks, the salt and everything falls right off that.
So it's working good?
It works awesome.
Perfect. And, and with the, you looking into it, I mean, we saved thousands of dollars, I mean, I gave you the suggestion, but I mean, you did all the legwork, and doing it ourselves in-house is saving tens of thousands of dollars.
We, uh, we, we did our whole fleet for about 1,800 bucks.
1,800, what did they want for just one vehicle, remember?
It was $2,000.
Per vehicle, so we did the whole fleet for 1,800 bucks, so, um, great job.
Well done.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Mr. Mead.
I just want to say, I don't think I've ever seen anything make Joe happier than that oil spray on the bottom of his vehicle.
And, and.
He's so happy with it, you know who said his back's improved? He's been using it on his back.
I want everybody to know, though, that when he says oil spray, it's not oil like crankcase oil, it's actually like a cooking-type oil that is actually biodegradable, so it's not, it's not a pollutant when it comes off, so.
Do you have a specific name for me, sir?
NH1 or something like that, isn't it? Yeah.
Rustane.
If there's no further discussion, and not opposed, motion will carry five zero, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Council blow, and with council read, made the motions a second, if there's no further discussion, and not opposed, we thank you for attending, we thank you for viewing, have a good evening.